May we now request that we want to please stand for the entrance of the Miss with our Honorable Presiding Officer.
The 18th Regular Session of the Tenth Sangguyang Panunso is now called to order. We are requesting the Secretary for the roll call.
The attendants for today's regular session, the regular Presiding Officer Honorable Evelyn E. Estabillo is present, Honorable Leo D. Revita is still out, Honorable Meliton Di Lemos is still out, Honorable Sierra Isabel Uy Salazar is present, Honorable Vernie Gem O. Caasi is present, Honorable Agrippino J. Cucilia Jr. is present, Honorable Rex Jasper R. Aala is on sick leave, Honorable Romeo L. Catayas is present, Honorable Catherine S. Elliot is present, Honorable Edmark O. Wakan is present, Honorable Arthur V. Ong Jr. is present, Honorable Dato Eric I. Perez is present, Honorable Roon Angela G. Rilyon is present, Honorable Batovin S. Rubinos is present. Madam President, there are 11 members present there to take quorum, madam.
There being in quorum, this session is in order. Let us now proceed to the opening prayer to be led by Honorable Romeo Catayas, followed by the singing of the Pambansang Awit, Panunok Pa'ng Katapatan, Sa Watawat ng Pilipinas, the recitation of the Councilor's Creed and the singing of the Tagumabuhay ka March.
Let us bless ourselves in the Holy Presence of God, in the name of the Father, and to the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with grateful and humble heart as we gather for our 18th Regular Session. We acknowledge your constant presence among us, and we earnestly ask for your wisdom, guidance, and light in all our deliberations. Bless our leaders and every participant here today. May integrity, compassion, and mutual respect guide our conversations and decisions. Let decision be orderly, meaningful, and thoughtful, always directed toward the welfare and detriment of our community. Grant us unity of purpose, clarity of mind, and sincerity of heart, so that the outcomes of this gathering may bring peace, progress, and glory to your holy name. This we pray through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Mga kababayan, ang Pambansang Awit ng Pilipinas. Kayang magigil, hebas na si rakanan, alam ng puso sa mitikoy buhay. Upang pinira, huwag ka nang mahiting, sa manlurupi, ikapasisin il. Sanadatap, tutok sa sikwaya, kisalami kong bonggao. Ayunadamp, tulakawin sa pagkayang minamahal. Apisdakdak, atawat huwag na kunpay, anatinin i. Ang pituwi na taro, nyakayda, pamay ni ba tibinin. Ruwanataro, ngangwar, habihag si kaw, huwag ngabig sa bibigong. Aming bigaya, napartay ba napi, ang pamatay ng gahil sa'yo.
Sa Watawat ng Pilipinas, apo ayaw niya. Umu'ng katapatan ng nung pasok sa Watawat ng Pilipinas. At Pambansang Kanyas, na sasakat, na may gawal, katapatan ng kanyas. At ang pinag-isusang sa'yo ng makakaso, mga tao, ang kakaligtas, at ang mapagasa.
The Counselor's Creed. I am a Philippine Consular, mandated by law and inaction wishes and ordinances that redound to the general welfare of my constituents in their pursuit of happiness, peace, and prosperity. I relate in public service above self as the guiding principle of my official act and as I head the practice of local legislation. May the Almighty guide my mind and heart, and shall be true my constituents and the Filipino people.
Sa lupain ng pangako, ay may isang paraiso. Ang matatagat matatayo ng mundo ay sagana sa saging at gitong. Mga hugig niya, mga parang, at mga lunti ang malayan. Sa ang lakuman, umiupag ma bastang ito'y larawan ng kasaganahan. Tagumabuhay ka, tagumabuhay ka, na sa'yo ang hukas na walang kasing ganda. Tagumabuhay ka, tagumabuhay ka, para isong puno ng pagasa. Ang lahat niyang nasasakupat, nagmamahal sa kapayapaan. Nagkakaisa lahat at nakutulungan patungo sa miki ka unlaran. Diwang katagal maabutin, lahat ng pinapangarap natin. Kapitamay lahat ay ating harapin, ang tutok ay kaya nating abutin. Tagumabuhay ka, tagumabuhay ka, na sa'yo ang hukas na walang kasing ganda. Tagumabuhay ka, tagumabuhay ka, para isong puno ng pagasa. Tagumabuhay ka, tagumabuhay ka, na sa'yo ang hukas na walang kasing ganda. Tagumabuhay ka, tagumabuhay ka, para isong puno ng pagasa. Para isong puno ng pagasa.
Please be seated. Good afternoon, everyone. Let us now proceed to the reading and consideration of the minutes and Journal of Proceedings of the 70th Regular Session on November 10. It is the pleasure the Committee Chair on Laws, Rules, and Privileges Attorney Edmark Wakan.
Madam President, considering that each and every member has been furnished with a copy of the minutes dated November 10, 2025, I therefore move to dispense with the reading thereof.
Moved by Counselor Wakan, seconded by Counselors Revita, Elliot, Catayas, and Rubinos. There being no objection, the reading of the full text of the minutes of the 70th (cough) excuse me, Regular Session is hereby dispensed.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the minutes of the 17th Regular Session dated November 10, 2025, composing 82 pages.
Moved by Counselor Wakan, seconded by Counselors Cucilia, Elliot, Rubinos, and Uy Salazar. Is there any discussion, amendments, objection? There being none, therefore the minutes of the 70th Regular Session of the 10th Sangguyang Panunso held on November 10, 2025, consisting of 82 pages, is hereby adopted without any amendments. Proceed.
For the journal, Madam President, I move to dispense with the reading of the Journal of the 70th Regular Session dated November 10, 2025.
Moved by Counselor Wakan, seconded by Counselors Revita, Rilyon, and Rubinos. There being no objection, the reading of its full text is dispensed.
I move for the approval of the Journal of the 17th Regular Session dated November 10, 2025, consisting of 41 pages, Madam President.
Moved by Counselor Wakan, seconded by Counselors, um, Rubinos, Ong, Rilyon, Uy Salazar, and Caasi. Is there any discussion, amendment objection, there being none, therefore the... Therefore, the Journal of Proceedings of the 17th Regular Session, consisting of 41 pages, held on November 10, 2025, at the SP Session Hall is hereby adopted. Let us now proceed to the next order of business, the privilege hour. Any member who would like to avail of the privilege hour? There being none, let's proceed to the question hour. It seems that we do not have invited guests. Let us now proceed to the reading and referral of proposed measures.
Madam President, for our measures on first reading, items under ordinances, we have draft city ordinance number 97, an ordinance institutionalizing the Doctor-y Senior House program in the City of Tagu, appropriating funds thereof, authorized Counselor Sierra Isabel Uy Salazar.
Draft City Ordinance Number 97 is referred to the Committee on Health and Laws, Rules, Regulations, and Privileges.
Number 2, draft City Ordinance Number 98, an ordinance institutionalizing the Baliksigla Program of the City Government of Tagu, providing free home-based rehabilitation management and therapy services, and appropriating funds therefore, authorized Counselor Sierra Isabel Uy Salazar.
Draft City Ordinance Number 98 is referred to the Committee on Health and Laws, Rules, Regulations, and Privileges.
Under resolutions, we have Resolution Number 285, a resolution congratulating Guendolin Jolina Luardo, a graduate of Davao del Norte State College for ranking top 7 in the October 2025 Fisheries Professional License Your Examination, authorized Counselor Rex Jasper Aala.
Resolution Number 285 is referred to the Committee on Gender and Development, Children, Family Welfare, and Social Services.
Under Letters and Communications, number 1, letter dated November 10, coming from Honorable Teres S. Agatep, the Punong Barangay of Pagsabangan, pertaining to the annual budget for 2026 of the Sangguyang Barangay of Pagsabangan in the amount of 10,869,716 pesos only.
Item number 1 is referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriation and Barangay Affairs.
Number 2, letter dated November 6, coming from Honorable Teres S. Agatep, Punong Barangay of Pagsabangan. This pertains to the supplemental budget for calendar year 2025 of the Sangguyang Barangay of Pagsabangan in the amount of 28,525 pesos and 98 centavos.
Item number 2 is referred to the Committee on Barangay Affairs and Finance Budget and Appropriation.
Number 3, letter dated October 24, coming from Honorable Joel C. Banani, the Punong Barangay of Busaon. This pertains to supplemental budget number 2 for calendar year 2025 of the Sangguyang Barangay of Busaon in the amount of 44,700 pesos.
Item number 3 is referred to the Committee on Barangay Affairs and Finance Budget and Appropriation.
Number 4, letter dated November 4, coming from Honorable Patrick V. Aquino, SK chairperson of Barangay Libuganon. This pertains to the annual budget for calendar year 2026 of the Sangguyang Kabataan of Barangay Busaon in the amount of 739,600 pesos.
Item number 4 is referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriation and Barangay Affairs and Youth and Sports Development.
Item number 5, Madam Chair, is that, uh, this letter dated November 6, coming from the Honorable City Mayor Ray T. Uy, pertaining to a draft resolution entitled "The Resolution Authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Ray T. Uy to Sign For and in behalf of the City Government of Tagu, the deed of donation executed by the Office of the President, covering the amount of 3 million pesos."
Item number 5 is referred to the Committee on Disaster Risk Reduction Management, Finance Budget and Appropriation, and Laws, Rules, Regulations, and Privileges.
Number 6, letter dated October 29, coming from Honorable Leo Del Gil Limson, SK chairperson of Barangay San Agustin, pertaining to the annual budget for fiscal year 2026 of the Sangguyang Kabataan of Barangay San Agustin in the amount of 594,400 pesos.
Item number 7 is referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriation and Barangay Affairs. Item number seven is referred to the Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriation and Barangay Affairs and Youth and Sports Development.
Number seven, Madam President, is this letter dated October 29, coming from Hon. Catherine D. Valiesteros, the Punong Barangay of Libuganon. This pertains to the annual budget for calendar year 2026 of the Sangguniang Barangay of Libuganon in the amount of 7,396,000 pesos.
Item number seven is referred to the Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriations and Barangay Affairs.
Number eight, letter dated November 10, coming from Hon. Valence B. Palaruan, S.K. Chairperson of Barangay Apokon, pertaining to the supplemental budget number one for calendar year 2025 of the Sangguniang Kabataan of Apokon in the amount of 1,996,557 pesos and seventeen centavos.
Item number eight is referred to the Committee on Youth and Sports Development, Finance Budget and Appropriation, and Barangay Affairs.
Number nine, Madam President, letter dated November 5, coming from the Hon. Ray T. Uy, our city mayor. This pertains to the memorandum of agreement with the land bank of the Philippines for the renewal of the automated color machine installed at Tagu City Hall.
Item number nine is referred to the Committee on Laws, Rules, Regulations, and Privileges.
Number ten, letter dated November 6, coming from Hon. Philadelphia D. Castillo, the Punong Barangay of San Isidro, pertaining to the supplemental budget number two for calendar year 2025 of the Sangguniang Barangay of San Isidro in the amount of 222,150 pesos.
Item number ten is referred to the Committee on Barangay Affairs and Finance Budget and Appropriation.
Number eleven, letter dated November 10, from Hon. Rosalie A. Adig, the Punong Barangay of Canocotan, pertaining to supplemental budget number two for calendar year 2025 of the Sangguniang Barangay of Canocotan in the amount of 637,100 pesos.
Item number eleven is referred to the Committee on Barangay Affairs and Finance Budget and Appropriation.
Item number twelve, letter dated November 13, coming from Hon. Valence B. Palaruan, S.K. Chairperson of Barangay Apokon, pertaining to the annual budget for fiscal year 2026 of the Sangguniang Kabataan of Apokon in the amount of 5,360,000 pesos.
Item number twelve is referred to the Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriations, Youth and Sports Development, and Barangay Affairs.
Number thirteen, letter dated November 12, coming from the Hon. City Mayor Ray T. Uy. This pertains to the request for a passage of a resolution authorizing the city mayor to sign the memorandum of agreement between and among the City Government of Tagu, grantee, and the apparent or guardian as provided under section four of City Ordinance Number 1014, Series of 2022, otherwise known as the Expanded City Educational Scholarship Program, or ISAS Pro, as amended by City Ordinance Number 1050, Series of 2024.
Item number thirteen is referred to the Committee on Education and Laws, Rules, and Privileges.
Item number fourteen, letter dated November 13, coming from the Hon. City Mayor Ray T. Uy, pertaining to a draft resolution authorizing the city mayor to enter into and sign for and in behalf of the City Government of Tagu, the memorandum of agreement with ASAS Tagu College is incorporated relative to the implementation of a student internship program.
Item number fourteen is referred to the Committee on Education and Laws, Rules, Regulations, and Privileges.
Number fifteen, letter dated November 12, 2025, coming from the Hon. City Mayor Ray T. Uy, pertaining to the request to authorize the city mayor to enter into and sign for and in behalf of the City Government of Tagu the amended memorandum of agreement with the Department of Tourism and the Tourism Infrastructure and Enterprise Zone Authority, or TIESA, for the Tourism Champions Challenge.
Item number fifteen is referred to the Committee on Tourism, Sisterhood Ties, and International Relations and Laws, Rules, Regulations, and Privileges.
Number sixteen, letter dated November 12, coming from the Hon. City Mayor Ray T. Uy. This pertains to a draft deed of donation of road right-of-way located at Barangay Mangkilam and Barangay San Miguel to be executed by the following donors in favor of the City Government of Tagu to wit, letter A, Arsenia G. Pasqual, and letter B, Maria Lourdes V. Lopez Galang.
Item number sixteen is referred to the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization and Laws, Rules, Regulations, and Privileges.
And for the last item, we have this letter dated November 13, coming from Hon. Edgardo El Akaso, Punong Barangay of New Balamban, pertaining to the annual budget for 2026 of the Sangguniang Barangay of New Balamban in the amount of 5,653,000 pesos.
Item number seventeen is referred to the Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriation and Barangay Affairs. Let us now proceed to the next order of business, the committee reports. First to report, Committee on Barangay Affairs and Finance Budget and Appropriations.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Joint Committee Report Number Eight, Series of 2025, submitted by Committee on Barangay Affairs and Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriations, dated November 12, 2025, with a subject matter.